Five oh one. Have the, uh, roll call please.
Councilman John Paul O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kara Crump.
Here.
Councilman Patrick Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Katrina Long Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Roger Manning.
Here.
And a staff city attorney Pam Booker.
I'm here.
City manager Kenneth Castle.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, I'd like to welcome our new council members. Good to see you in person. Better circumstances, but it's still good to see you. I'm welcome. Thank you. First item on a workshop agenda, the city hall planning. We call, I call, wish to have this workshop on this particular subject because none of us been, none of us been very gracious to us at, at least a five hundred dollars a year for this, for this facility, but, but it's, uh, it's really not sufficient for our, our needs. And so we haven't really done any deep planning on that. And I asked Mr. Castle to put together a, uh, presentation, preliminary presentation to outline what his idea was for moving forward with, uh, the city hall. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As I outlined in my memo, the, the question for all new cities is when do you build the city hall? You build it too early, you wait too late, or what's the right time? And that's a decision by the council. But as I looked at requirements of what we would need for a city hall, based upon new technologies, based upon contract situations, also based on conversations with other city managers, and build out of roughly fifteen thousand residents, a fifteen thousand square foot facility would be comparable to most other cities that we are at. So therefore, if you look at a fifteen thousand square foot building at a rough price of about two hundred and thirty-four dollars a square foot, it'd be about three and a half million dollars just for the structure itself. Uh, then you have soft costs and site work, um, which is about, uh, two point three million dollars. And then you have design costs well over seven hundred thousand dollars. Bottom line is a fifteen thousand square foot building would run you about six point five million dollars. Uh, the question comes in is, do you decide for it, do you bond for it, when do you bond for it, when do you want to come online? Kind of laid out a preliminary plan in that the dates could change from year to year, but it's going to take you about a year or so to year and a half to design. It's going to take you outsourcing almost a year by the time you get it ready. And then it's going to take you a year or so to get it built. So you're talking a good four. If we started, uh, this year right now in twenty twenty-one, the earliest that you could have a city hall constructed would be by the end of twenty twenty-six. So it's about a four to five year process from start design to finish. This is really a preliminary as to when does the council believe that you should start a city hall? You could also start out with a smaller city hall of about half the size, design it, start out with about six to eight thousand square feet, design it so that you can have the other eight thousand square feet later. There's a myriad of ways to do it. There's, in the meantime, you can also do some temporary type structures for your city hall on the land once we acquire the land. So again, there's a, it's a preliminary brainstorming. What are y'all thinking? Where y'all want to head on it? And then we can plan further from there.
I would, I would have been, I would have hoped that we've been further ahead on this than, than we are at this point. Unless, until we put a plan together of something, start, start, we're not going to get to where we want to be. Uh, Mr. Carter, I understand this has, uh, a plan for us for some square footage, some land here somewhere in the city and, um, is that going to be sufficient for what you were thinking about?
Yeah, when I, when I looked at it and then comparison has the swans on me, has looked at it as well, we can build sufficient square footage on anywhere from two and a quarter to two and three quarter acres with no problem at all.
With a fifteen thousand square foot building?
You can actually a few feet on, on a two point seven five acre lot. You just have to go more vertical to keep your footprint down in order to get your parking and another stuff.
Um, I would like to see moving forward if we could get, I do appreciate the summary. Um, and I am in, in agreement with the mayor. I wish we would have been a little, a lot further with it. But moving forward, can we get an actual line item budget, maybe a few of them? Especially, we, we do realize our current, um, pandemic is going to affect every municipality's budget. So if we could get a line item budget opposed to summary budget, I think that would help all of us, um, with even the outlining of, um, what our town hall would actually look like. So if we could, I, I would appreciate that, so we could just see it with some other numbers included, I know, in, just some projected numbers.
So you're looking at for a full fifteen thousand square feet or an eight thousand square feet to start? I mean, there's a number of potential things and what is, what's the timeline you want to look at to actually have it constructed?
Um, well, I, I would ask you as, as CEO to kind of give us two different options. Maybe give it to us based on a couple of different variations and, and we go from there.
Okay.
Put that together.
Thank you.
Are there any other, any other questions?
I think most importantly is, is step one, getting the land. I see that, you know, that's on, on track to be done by nine thirty. I think it's just very important that we stay true to that. Because none of it can happen until that land is secured, so it's good. That's the first and most important step. Let's get that done.
And I believe, um, there's some commitments in the developer agreement that was hold with everybody recently for that to happen. And I believe we need to work diligently through that developer agreement, through, through the VO and everything else, and bring it up to date as fast as we can along with the rest of the code.
Uh, item agenda B. Uh, I requested this item on our agenda because we have a conflict between the city of Wesley and Seminole Improvement District and will require the council to make some sort of decisions. Council has authorized the city attorney to obtain a second opinion on the subjects which will be presented this evening. Seminole Improvement District will present their position also. I feel that the council needs to hear both positions in an open forum to be able to decide how to move forward. I hope that we can come to an agreement that can move us forward without litigation as this could hold up construction for the developer and the growth of the city. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney.
Mayor, council, um, I've spoken to all of you individually, but this is the first time we've addressed this publicly. This issue came about as a result of a bond that was submitted with an additional rider obligee adding to, to the bond. I did not accept that bond in this plating process for improvements and plat comes forward. A bond is required for that before that plat can be reported and the public records and property sold off or development continues. The other bonds that we have received for the city, I believe there's been about seventeen, did not contain that rider language adding to it to the document. So I sent back that that was not approved. If that rider was removed from that bond, that plat can be reported and moved forward. I've had many conversations with Mr. Dickinson to her about that, uh, as well as with the city manager and city council. We were not able to come to a consensus on whether or not that rider stayed in or not. Those conversations also pertaining to completing, uh, the drafting of chapter five, which also includes many different provisions where Sid is included in that process for approvals through the city. So we still have those conversations outgoing. As a result, a couple of the council members asked, how do we resolve this? Can we move it forward? Can we get a different opinion if the two of you don't agree so we can go forward? That is what was done in this case. There's PowerPoint presentation that Rick Derolem will walk you guys through and explain the different documents that apply to both Sid and the city here. Those are the Florida statutes, chapter one seventy-seven, the interlocal agreement between Sid and city, Sid's enabling legislation, as well as portions of the county's uniform land development code, uh, which applies to the city right now because we still have not completed adopting our own codes in this particular area. So we'll walk through those different areas and explain it to the council. Those are the documents we've been looking at to base this opinion upon. And I would like for us to be able to resolve this, get direction on moving forward with this bond because it also applies to other plats that are coming forward on your June eighth meeting as well as future meetings. And we just need direction on how to move forward with those items so the development can continue. And with that, I'll turn it over and let Rick introduce himself as we'll start the presentation.
What do you, what do you want, right, what we're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm smiling right now.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Rick Derolem. Uh, I'm an attorney and I'm a partner at the law firm of Trav Lieberman. Uh, I want to just give you a little bit of my background in case you're not familiar with me or have forgotten. I've started my legal career as an assistant public defender here in Palm Beach County. Uh, when I finished working for the government, I went to a firm called Boost Casey, Sicklin, Lupitz, Martins, McBain and O'Connell. Uh, that firm deals with, or dealt with and still does deal with primarily land use. Land development is part of the big segment that they have. And I've been litigating in that arena, including land use development orders. Um, we've represented both cities. I've been litigating. I've represented the city of Lake Worth, the city of Riviera Beach. Uh, we've represented the, leave the city of West Palm, yeah, city of West Palm. Um, we've represented Northern Improv, Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District, um, as well as other governmental entities. And when I was tasked to look at this, so I do have experience in what I'm talking about and I'm not anti anything, I'm not for anything. And I do understand that in order for the city of Wesley to reach its full potential, it has to be built out. That's, that is, that is part of it and I'm not in any way, shape or form taking a position that development is bad, that development should be, should be restricted. My view on all of this is limited to what are the powers designated and delegated to the city? What are the powers designated and delegated to the special improvement district or the seminal improvement district, Sid? Um, and when I was asked to review everything, I want to be clear. I was not asked to review it with, with an outcome. It wasn't, it wasn't posed to me that way, nor would I accept it that way. What I was asked to do very simply was analyze the powers of the city and the, and Sid as I saw it with regards to land, land development regulations and in particular plating and plat requirements. That is, that is the sole focus. Now with regard to that, what I looked at, we go to the next slide or...
Zoe, can you move these forward? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go through the summary and then I'm going to take you through everywhere that I looked and everything that I saw. And there's a couple of points that since, since I developed this PowerPoint that I want to make sure that I, that I address, but I'll do that through the course of this. So, the summary is that the city is the specific and delegated authority as it relates to land planning and plating. The special improvement district or Sid has no authority in land plat, planning and plating within the city. And Sid should not be permitted really even input on plat recordation, much less be listed as the obli, as an obligee on the guarantee for developer performance. Now, I'm going to walk you through every place I looked verbatim as to what I looked at and what I believe was salient and, and on point with this issue of plating. The first place you look at is, is chapter one seventy-seven Florida statutes, which actually and by actual specific designation governs plating. Ancillary to that, just in general terms, is the Municipal Home Rules Powers Act. Then you go to the city charter, the Enabling Act of the Seminole Improvement District, the interlocal agreement between the city and Sid, and then the city's current uniform land development regulations, which is an adaptation of the Palm Beach County Uniform Land Development Code. It's my understanding that the city of Wesley has not adopted its own new set, that that's in draft form. So what I must look at is the land development regulations that are in place as we sit, as we speak. So the next slide, please. Now with regard to, with regard to all of this, what I want to always start out with is a basic civics lesson, a basic structure of government because it's important to me that we understand how everything flows and the general principles of it. And our government is based on a hierarchy where the federal government is at the top of the pyramid and the local governing, but, local government is at the bottom, at the base. The principles are that the most powerful reserve the powers it wants and those not specifically reserved flow downward to the next lower level and the process repeats. When it comes to land development regulations, in general terms, the power flows down to the local governing body. And the main reason for that, and I'm going to, I'll talk a little bit more about this, is you have a federal government and it, it has a constitution. And what the constitution says is that those powers not specifically reserved travel to the states. So what you've got is you've got the, you know, the power to have armies, things like that at the federal level, the power to have environmental regulation, that's omnibus that goes over. But if it's not specifically reserved at the federal level, it goes down to the state. At the state level, if it's not specifically reserved, what the, what the Municipal Home Powers Act does is it says it goes down to the local government. And the hierarchy visualized is, next slide, please. The hierarchy visualized is the federal government's on top, the state government comes below that, the county is in the third position, and sometimes that's where it ends. Because as you well know, the history of Wesley was prior to its incorporation, it was unincorporated Palm Beach County, so there was nothing below. Once the city got incorporated in two thousand sixteen, correct, two thousand sixteen, you took that low, that lowest rung of government and that flows to you. And the logic behind this, especially in land development and land planning, is the local people should decide where they want things. It's, it's, it's really is that simple. And the federal government shouldn't tell you where the traffic light should go. Shouldn't tell you where you want your city hall, shouldn't tell you where you want your parks. That should be done at the local level. And that's, that's an important part and why it, it naturally flows that way and why you don't have a lot of pow, specific powers reserved above it. Now, where the powers come from with regard to the plating, talks about the, the first place and the main place that I look at is chapter one seventy-seven Florida statute. And I've already talked about this, the remainder is the Florida Home Rule Powers Act. That was part of the Florida constitution and also codified in statutes, which say essentially what I've just said, that the municipalities have the right to govern themselves except where the state says, or the state says you can't.
Next slide, please.
There's one more, we can even skip that one. So what I looked at, the first part was chapter one seventy-seven Florida statute. And it's entitled Land Boundaries and Plating. And it's part one of chapter one seventy-seven and is encompassed by one seventy-seven oh eleven through one seventy-seven one fifty-one. In particular, and why I say this, is section one seventy-seven oh thirty-one four and oh seventy-seven oh seventy-one one A. Florida statutes defines and grants the plating powers exclusively in the city to be exercised through its council. And why, and in my world, when you, the joke is that in government, that no one knows what they're doing except for there's a presumption in the law that when the legislature speaks and it uses words like shall and must and exclusively, that it is presumed to mean exactly that. There is no room for interpretation. When you see the word exclusive, we can't say unless we think otherwise. Exclusive means exclusive and not including but limited to. And the actual one seventy-seven oh thirty-one four is on the next slide and this is verbatim. This is not, this is not in my interpretation. The statute actually defines governing body means the board of county commissioners or the legal governing body of a county municipality, town or village of the sixth. Now, this is another civics moment. So as the federal government, we basically have three branches. We have the judicial, the legislative and the executive. The judicial is the courts, the legislative is the congress and the executive is the office of the president and, and below that. At the state level, we've got same three. Those which not reserved, we have judicial, executive and legislative, congress, governor and, and state courts. And at the local level, we kind of lose the judicial. The, the, the courts in Palm Beach County are at county level and state level. So at a municipal level, you don't have that. What you have is you have the executive branch is the city manager, the legislative branch is essentially the council. So what you look at is the governing body of a, of a municipality is going to be its council pursuant to one seventy-seven oh thirty-one four. Now, under one seventy-seven oh seventy-one one A, what it talks about under one is before a plat is offered to recording, it must be approved by the appropriate governing body and evidence of such approval must be placed on the plat. If not approved, the governing body must return the plat to the professional surveyor, mapper of the legal entity offering the plat for recordation for purposes of this part. Now there are other parts under one seventy-one, there's A, B, C, D. But for, that essentially designates which government authority is in charge. Now, it's my understanding that the plats that we're talking about are entirely located within the boundaries of Wesley, which is why subsection one A applies. And it says the governing body of the municipality has, has exclusive jurisdiction to approve the plat. Now, why is this important to me? It's important to me because it has the word exclusive and it designates who it is. By definition, if it's exclusive to that, it cannot be another. And it cannot be the city in this case. They do not have plating authority, be it by the statute or by, as I'm going to show you, by the other documents that I reviewed. They have authority to do lots of stuff, but they don't have authority on the plat. Now, moving on, one of the questions that was asked of me was, do I believe that the city has the authority to require a bond prior to plat recordation? And my answer is yes. And, and there, I'm going to show you why I say that. The first place you look is, it doesn't say it in one seventy, one seventy-seven oh seventy-one directly. It doesn't say it in one, chapter one seventy-seven at all directly. However, the first place that jumped out at me was one seventy-seven oh ninety-one nine. And what it talks about, and this is really about the setting of monuments. But within those, within the language of it, it talks about in those counties or municipalities that require subdivision improvements and have the means of ensuring the construction of those improvements, such as bonding requirements, monuments shall be set prior to the expiration of the bond or other surety. So what this says to me is that there is at least a contemplation within one seventy-seven that a city does have the ability to require a bond prior to the construction of the improvements. Now, the other place that, that this makes sense is in the Palm Beach County Land Development Code and we're going to talk about that later. And where, but the point is in the Palm Beach County Land Development Code, and this can't be overlooked, and I'm going, I'm going to take a second on this point, is that under the Palm Beach County Land Development Codes, what it really requires of everyone is before you get a plat recorded, you need to either one, show that the infrastructure is, that's already there is sufficient, or two, you need to complete it. That's what's required. Now, there's a caveat. The caveat is if you want to record your plat before you have it completed, you can do that. But here's what you have to do, you have to post a bond. You have to, and it doesn't, it's really called a guarantee. Bond is only one form and we're going to talk about that. There's three ways that the Palm, under the Palm Beach County Uniform Land Development Code, you can guarantee, you can do a cash bond, you could do a letter of credit, or you could do a performance bond. Now, the logic behind that is really simple. And why the argument of, well, you don't have the authority to require the bond. If that's, if that's posed as a thing, why that is a suicidal position to take. If the city doesn't have the authority to require a bond to be posted, then if you lose that part of the land development code, then what it, what it essentially says is you can't get your plat recorded unless the infrastructure is in place already or you complete the infrastructure. And it's not good for anyone to have that. Because the, the notion is that what would take you three years with bonding will take you ten without because you'll have to go and do that, you can't start selling land, you can't start building, you can't start doing anything until the infrastructure is there. So the notion that you don't have the authority is contrary to the law. It's contrary to the, the one seventy-seven, it's contrary to the Palm Beach County Uniform Land Development Code and it's contrary to the idea of fulfilling the vision of any, any county municipality or otherwise. It just doesn't make sense. So with, so that's what I looked at. So I believe from, from that point that the city is the sole authority, that it does have the power to bond and there is at least a reference in one seventy-seven and the current uniform, Palm Beach County Uniform Land Development Code, which allows bonding. So I was, I'm comfortable with the idea of the authority and bonding. Now, one seventy, next slide, please. In one seventy-seven oh thirty-one fourteen, the plat, this is, the plat or replat means a map or delineated representation of the subdivision of lands being a complete, exact representation of the subdivision and other information in compliance with the requirement of all applicable sections of this part and any local ordinance. Now, why is this important to me? Uniform Land Development Code and land development is also done by ordinance. So you, you have another reference in one seventy-seven that says to me, well, with, you have to comply with the local ordinances and if that means right now the bond is required into the land development code, you have to do it with regard to plating. I don't see that there's deference or a choice. Now, next slide, please. Now, the next slide is again, we go back and I talked about this, the structure of the city's government. You have two branches, legislative and executive. And the council passes the ordinances which become the law and the manager executes the directives and laws passed by the council. Now, the council people, and I, I always bring this up because even as I sit here, when I'm, when I'm hired by a city, when I'm hired by a government entity, I represent that entity, but that entity is the people. It's the people that live there and my job is to look at that on their behalf. We are not, and I always say this, people think we live in a democracy, we don't. If we lived in a democracy, everyone would have to vote on everything, like where that traffic light is. That's not what we are. We are a democratic republic. The, the people elect the representatives who make these decisions. And even to the extent that I'm hired out, that's always who I'm looking out for. I'm looking out for the people and I'm not judging, I'm only reading. So I always want to put that in context with, with, I don't have an axe to grind. Now, we talked about the statute, we talked about one seventy-seven, which brings us, now we're at the city level. And the constitution of the city, next slide, please, is essentially the city charter. Now, I understand there are differences between the actual constitution and the city charter. But when I, when I say that, I'm only, I'm only illustrating the point that it's the governing document. It sets up the powers of the city. And when I look at it, I was given a copy of the charter of the city. And what your, what your charter says, if the charter provides that a city has the power, then that power has it. Then the city has that power, excuse me. If the charter specifically says you do not have that power, you don't have it. Now, the question, uh, next slide, please. Now, your city charter is interesting because you can have this middle ground. The charter says you have it, you have it, the charter says you don't have it, you don't have it. What if the charter doesn't say anything? Which way, which way does it go? Your charter contemplated that. And what your charter said in section four of the charter is that when in doubt, the charter should be construed, I have the word viewed, but I'm going to show you your, the actual charter documents that are used so that you understand why I'm saying what I'm saying and you could read it yourself. If you, if your opinion differs, then it differs, but that's, I was hired to give an opinion. Now, with regard to that, under section four of your charter, it, it says that when in doubt, the charter should be construed in the most liberal terms to, in favor of the city, meaning when in doubt, the city has the power. There is nothing wrong about that. There is nothing wrong about that. Now, with regard to the planning functions, land use, zoning, land development, your charter talks about that and in section 12D1 and 12D2. Now, comprehensive plan is 12D1, and what a comprehensive plan essentially is, it's more of the 30,000-foot view. We want this here, we want that, we want this, we want that. When you talk about zoning authority and boards of adjustment, you're talking about where the rubber hits the road, how the comprehensive plan gets executed in real ways, in real time, real how. So, in real manner. So you look at that, and you, the city council, have been specifically vested as that planning authority. So I'm very comfortable with that. Uh, one back please on the slide. So, section four of the charter, I talked about this. This was literally cut and paste from your charter. And I can read the whole first paragraph, but the real part that caught my eye with regard to this is this, is really starting from the second to last sentence. "The city shall have all governmental, corporate, and proprietary powers necessary to enable it to conduct municipal government, perform municipal functions, render municipal services, and may exercise any power for municipal services unless expressly prohibited by law. The powers of this city shall be liberally construed in favor of the city." So again, what I look at here is if it says you can, you can. If it says you can't, you can't. If it doesn't say anything, you can't. Section 12D1 and 12D2. The 12D1, I talked about the transitional comprehensive plans and land development regulations. And however, I'm going to go to the last sentence, "all," plan it, "all." And again, when I look at, when I look at words in construction, it doesn't say some. It says "all," and I have to presume it means exactly what it says. "All planning functions, duties, and authorities to administer shall thereafter be vested in the city council of Westlake," which shall, again, when you see "shall," it means must or mandatory. It doesn't mean unless we feel otherwise. "Will, shall be deemed the local planning agency until the council establishes a separate local planning agency. Nothing in this charter will divest any landowner in the city of development rights under existing zoning and land use approvals." So, when I look at that, what I say is the city has not established a separate local planning agency, to the best of my knowledge. I haven't seen anything that establishes it, which means as we sit here today, that power is vested in the council. But under the, now we go below that, under D2, "All powers and duties of the planning commission, zoning authority, and any boards of adjustment and the county commission of Palm Beach has set forth these transitional zoning and land use regulations shall be vested in the city council until such time as the city council delegates all or a portion thereof to another entity." Again, what you have is "shall be vested in the council," not maybe, it must be vested, and it'll, and it rests in the council's hand until you delegate all or a portion thereof to another entity. So from a planning and land development perspective, I am not aware that any of it has been delegated in any way, shape, or form, including to Sid, and I'm going to show you exactly why I'm saying that shortly. Now, section 13H of the charter, it does not give, 13H is really a function of duplication of services. And that's part of what we, what we hear about. And I'm sorry to take the long way around, but it's, I want to make sure you see what I'm seeing, not that you agree with it, just so you see it. Now, section 13H talks about and contemplates a non-duplication of services, that Sid is going to come in and do services, and if the city and Sid are both doing the same service, it should be Sid that does it. And that's fine, except for Sid can't do what it can't do. It is governed by a similar document called the Enabling Act, and it is given certain powers. And if it doesn't have those powers, it doesn't have those powers and can't do that. So, that, so with 13 of the charter, now here's the direct copy of 13, section 13H of the charter. "The city shall not exercise any function or provide any services being performed by or provided by the Seminole Improvement District at any time prior to the transition date." Now, your transition date is 30 years out. I could go to the charter and show you that, but it's 30 years out, it's not anything I have to worry about. "The provision does not impair the ability of the city to contract for fire rescue or law enforcement services as provided in 13A and 13B above." So, it's again, if the Seminole Improvement District can provide it, and the city is also providing it, there shouldn't be overlap. Now, we get to the Sid. And we talked about the city's constitution, and the Sid is a special improvement district. Its powers are derived from a specific act of the state legislature called the Enabling Act. Once again, if the Enabling Act does not grant Sid a power, then it doesn't have it. Now, Sid was actually enabled prior, but it was called the Water District. And the Improvement District was changed over in 2000 in House Bill 1559. And that is still what I call the Enabling Act, it gives Sid its powers. And that's the one that I have to look at. It's the most recent, I'm not aware of any update to it. Uh, has there been an update? No. Okay. So when I go to it, I'm only, I'm looking at what powers Sid has, and then more importantly, where do they fall in the paradigm of land development regulation? Now, in looking through in their Enabling Act, the part that jumped out at me was section 5.2 of their Enabling Act. And I just want to stay on the title for a moment. "Powers of the district, compliance with county plans and regulations." Now, when I read that, I did have to go to the body of it, but at least it clued me in when I just looked at that, at that language, that we're discussing exactly what we're talking about here. Because when Sid was enabled in 2000, City Westlake didn't exist, it fell within the boundaries of Palm Beach County. And if Palm Beach County has plans and regulations, we at least have to look at what the powers of the district are in relation to the powers being exercised by the county with regard to land development regulation. And when you go into subsection two, it says, "Notwithstanding any authority contained within this section, the development, operation, or maintenance of any district facilities or services shall comply with the adopted comprehensive plan for Palm Beach County and any adopted land development regulations or specialized plans adopted thereunder which apply within the geographic boundaries of the district." Now, what does that mean to me? What it means to me is the Sid comes under the rules of the county. The county gets to do the comprehensive, they're a comprehensive plan. The county gets to do their own land development regulations, and the Sid needs to comply with that, not the other way around. This is, this is pretty much the opposite of the language in your charter, which says when in doubt, give the benefit of the doubt to the city. This says notwithstanding any authority contained within this section, which means to me, when I read that in simple terms, I don't care what the rest, what, all the powers you have in the world, I don't care. When it comes to the county, their land development regulations, you fall under it, which means for plating, you have to comply with the county. You are subservient to the county. Now, when the city gets incorporated and it adopted its own comprehensive plan and its own land development regulations, effectively what happens is the words county gets substituted for city. It's within the geographic boundaries. It is the Sid with regard to land development regulations and plating is subservient to the city. Now, the, section five, the next slide, this is pretty much what I've just talked about. We were clear that it was, in 2000, it was unincorporated Palm Beach County. We're clear that upon incorporation, the city becomes the governing body under 177 for plating, so it is now in control. So now, what can Sid do? And this is, and they could do lots, lots of things. And I want to be clear on this because I've heard and seen Mr. Difindorfer's letter, which, which I think was dated today or yesterday, that the Sid has more powers than I, than apparently what I was talking about. They do. But they, they don't have the power to plat. They don't have the power to do land regulations, and nothing in that changes any of the language I've talked about with regards to the city charter, the powers of the city being, the land planning powers being vested in the city council. Nothing changes their limitations on their Enabling Act, and in particular, section 5.2 was not addressed at all. Now, with regard to what they can do, and this is part of it, to construct, not plan, not plat. Improve, not plan, not plat. Pave, not plan, not plat. Maintain roadways, not plan, not plat. Necess, roadways necessary and convenient for the exercise of the powers or duties of any of the powers and duties of said district. So, when I look at that, I say, okay, well, they can construct and improve and pave and maintain roadways. Necessary and convenient. That's a conjunction, and "and" doesn't mean "or," "and" means "both." So even in context of what they can construct and improve, it's got to be both necessary and convenient. Now, they can include as a component of roads, parkways, bridges, landscaping, irrigation, bicycle, jogging path, street lighting, and all of the customary elements of a modern road system, but the predicate is for them to construct, improve, and pave it before they can even get into this other stuff. It's got to be necessary and convenient. But again, I don't have a problem with that. The issue, the issue that I have is it doesn't say plan, it doesn't say plat. It is completely silent to that. And nothing in there that I've seen gives that power. So that was what I looked at in the Enabling Act. And then I went to the interlocal agreement. And the interlocal agreement, there's, the city entered into the interlocal agreement with Sid. And that's a contract. Essentially, what an interlocal agreement is, it's a contract between governmental entities that are designed to most efficiently spend resources and taxpayer money, most efficiently. And that's what they're designed to do, to work in harmony that, and this goes back to that non-duplication of services in your charter. The interlocal agreement is kind of in harmony with that concept, that Sid is going to be doing things and that the city shouldn't have to duplicate efforts. That's what it's there for. So what I look at in the interlocal agreement with regards to planning and plating is, are, what is the intent of the parties, and not guesswork, but what is the language of the agreement that would tell me what the party is intended? So I found several sections that I think are applicable to what we're talking about in section six, section 18C, 18F, and 32A of the interlocal agreement. This is where I, where I believe it is clear that Sid has no role in planning and plating and land development regulations whatsoever. And the first place I want to go is section six of the interlocal agreement. And what, this almost ended it for me. It really did. What we've talked about so far is the state statutes say the city is in charge of planning and plating. We have the city charter, which says you're in charge of planning and plating. We have the Enabling Act of the Sid, which says that they have to come under the land development regulations of Palm Beach County. And now we have the interlocal agreement. And section six of the interlocal agreement says, "Nothing in this agreement shall be construed to restrict Westlake's home rule powers, police powers, or Westlake's authority to amend its comprehensive plan and make planning, zoning, or other land use decisions." So what that says to me is very clearly, for the first time in the agreement, and both parties signed off on this. So when I say nothing, this isn't the position of the city. It's not the position of Sid. This is a joint position, that nothing in this agreement shall be construed to limit, to restrict Westlake's home rule powers, or more importantly to this, Westlake's authority to amend its comprehensive plan and make planning, zoning, or other land use decisions. Plating is part of planning, zoning, and land use decisions. Recordational plating is land use. Now, I go to section 18F, and it says, "Each party shall only review those items or matters over which it has jurisdiction, and no party shall deny a permit or authorization on grounds over which it has no jurisdiction." Now, what does that mean to me? What this means to me is that the jurisdiction, and this is, this is a demarcation point, jurisdiction over plating solely in the city. Rest solely in the city. Sid has no business with plating. Now, constructing, yeah, they do. And that's, and that's what you look at, and you say, no party shall deny a permit. Okay, well, they might, they might have a role in permitting. Permitting is not plating. Permitting is building, and they may have a role in it. We know that they can have a role in construction of roads. We know they can have a role in construction of parts that's necessary and convenient. But with regards to plating, they don't have jurisdiction. So they shouldn't even be reviewing, according to this, the agreement between the parties. You shall only, not, unless you feel otherwise, again, when language is used of mandatory, shall and must. It doesn't mean may or unless you feel otherwise. You shall only review those items of which, over which you have jurisdiction. That's why I said what I said. Now, here is another, section 18C. In case we weren't clear, Westlake has the exclusive authority to set requirements and standards for, approve, and issue permits or authorizations for all comprehensive planning, zoning, and land development activities not falling within Sid's area of authority set forth above. Now, what's set forth above, I didn't put everything in there, but what Sid talks about is the building of roads that are necessary and convenient. It talks about, and that's the construction, not the plating of, not the planning for, but the building of roads. That's what they have. They have some other things on there, but it primarily deals with water and water control, which is part of what Sid does, a major part of, a major part of what they do. But when I'm looking at this, I said, okay. Now, just in case that we weren't clear and there was any doubt, we go to section 32A of the interlocal agreement. And this is now an acknowledgement by Sid of their powers. It's not a "we," this is pretty much a Sid. And the language is Sid acknowledges that it does not have planning or zoning authority, home rule or general police powers, and nothing in this agreement shall be read or interpreted to mean otherwise. So when I get to that, in case it wasn't clear in the other references, we're pretty clear that the language is exactly what it says. It says, "We acknowledge," if I'm Sid, "we acknowledge that we don't have planning or zoning authority, we don't have home rule or general police powers, and nothing in this agreement shall be read or interpreted to mean otherwise." We sat there for a minute on that, and let that one sink in. Nothing shall be read or interpreted to mean otherwise. So again, when you like in your city charter, where it says, "When in doubt, give the city power," this is the same thing. When in doubt, if it deals with land, land planning, zoning authority, or home rule or general police powers, it should not be construed to mean that Sid has any powers. Sid's saying, "We don't." So it was relatively clear to me. And when I talked about the, what Sid can do, there's section 14A of the interlocal agreement, and this is almost a verbatim copy of the language in the Enabling Act. And it talks about, "Shall have the authority, the ability within the service area to construct, improve, pave, and maintain roads necessary and convenient, and to include as a component roads, parkways, bridges, et cetera." This is literally the exact same language as in the Enabling Act. So there's now, there's no inconsistencies there. It still doesn't talk about planning, or plating, or zoning, or anything of the sort, because that's not what's contemplated, and we know that the document says they don't have that power. Now, the final place I went with regard to this was the Palm Beach County Uniform Land Development Code. And the Palm Beach County Uniform Land Development Code is how you build. Is, with regard to plating, what do you, what do you need to get your plat done? And using a Uniform Land Development Code is interesting, to say the least, if you haven't done it before, because it's one of those documents that if you go to section one, section one will say, go to section four, section four will say, go to section seven, section seven will say, go to section nine, section nine will say, go back to section one. So it's kind of circular in how it operates. It does, it works, but it takes a while. So then I looked at the bonding, and with regard to the plating, who has to do what? And how does a plat get recorded? And what are the workarounds to getting a plat recorded prior to the infrastructure being completed? Because that's really what we're talking about in this. It's getting a plat recorded and getting infrastructure completed. Do we do it before, during, or do we have to have the infrastructure done before? Or how can we get around that requirement? So I looked at it, and we're going to go through the sections of the Uniform Land Development Code. And one of the things that we talk, that we look at in the Land Development Code is who's doing it? Who's building it? Who's doing it? And the term that comes from this, the developer. And that could mean any developer, and I'm not looking at it in the terms of, you know, Mito or anybody else. I'm looking at it in its generic term. Who gets to do this? So, the developer would be the one that's seeking a plat. It's really, for lack of a better term, the landowner, saying, "I'm ready to build. I want to go get this recorded. I want to sell lots. I want to do all that." So the developer... So the developer is the one that is mentioned in the Uniform Land Development Code about this over and over and over again. And what it talks about, it says, essentially, next slide, that, section eleven B two A six of the Palm Beach County Uniform Land Development Code, it says that all guarantees required to article eleven E one A minimum required improvements for all subdivisions. And what I'm gonna show you, section one, goes to section nine, this is the next section. What the minimum improvements are, for lack of a better term, is infrastructure. It's, it's infrastructure, and we'll talk about that. That if you want to do this, the guarantees have to take the form of one of three things, a cash bond, a letter of credit, or a performance or surety bond. That's what I talked about early on, that, that's, that's the trigger that would allow a plat to be recorded prior to the infrastructure being there. Cause the other way it happens is, the infrastructure is, that's already there and existing would be sufficient to service the plat, you don't need to post a guarantee. If you, if you wanna build the infrastructure first and complete it, you don't need a guarantee. But if you want to, if you wanna record it before you built it, you need a guarantee. That's, that's, that's simple. Now, the minimum requirements is, second to the next slide, it's eleven E one A, and the minimum requirements, except when waived pursuant to article eleven A F, there you go, one section going to another, the minimum improvement shall be the requirement for all subdivisions in order to provide the improvements. These required, so, now, the last sentence, oh, sorry, second lesson. These required improvements shall be installed prior to recordation of the corresponding plat or certified boundary survey, survey, unless the developer furnishes a guarantee assuring their installation accords with the provision of this article. So that's where I, when I talked about it before, that's the mechanism. You, if you wanna get it, if you want your plat recorded, you either need to complete it, or you need to furnish the guarantee, and the guarantee is, is the three forms that I just talked about. Now, section eleven A F one is the exceptions to installations of improvements requirements. And this is pretty much what it, what it says. If after review of the preliminary subdivision plan, the county engineer, that would be now the city engineer, determines that certain improvements already existing are adequate to meet the intent of the required improvements, the installation of those required improvements may be waived. That's pretty much it. And the application is that, you know, that's, that's all we've got. Now, we know in this case that the improvements aren't there, already, they're, they're, from my understanding, this is raw, predominantly vacant land or raw land. So they have to be installed. So now we're down to, you either do it and then record pursuant to the Land Development Co, Code, or you, you guarantee it, and you can record prior to the guarantee. And that's, and I found no authority that I could locate that, that Sid had a role in plating. And that's, and so I came full circle with it, that they have, they have lots of things that they do. They have, they have lots of things, they build roads, they, they have, they can maintain parks, they can build parks, they can do all that, they're pursuant to that, but they don't have plating and planning. It's just not within the purview of them, so it cannot be a duplication of services. The plating and planning cannot be a duplication of services because they don't have it. So when I, when I completed it, again, chapter one seventy-seven talks specifically about who has the powers, and that's the city. There was nothing that undermined the Home Rule Powers Act, the charter specifically delegated the council as the planning and planning authority, uh, and you haven't delegated that away. The Enabling Act of Seminole Improvement District talked about very specifically, it falls under the land development regulations of Palm Beach County, and now it falls under the land development regulations of the city. And the current Uniform Land Development Code requires the developer to post the bond and to the, to the county, to the city. So when I was done with my analysis, it's not, it's not that this shouldn't, this shouldn't happen, it's not that development shouldn't happen, it should. And the final thing that, that I didn't talk about yet, that I wanted to make sure I hit on, is this is not the first plat recordation in Wesley. There's been seventeen others. Where, and what we've got here, it's the seventeen other times it's been done, it's been done consistently with what Ms. Booker, how, how she read it, and it's been done consistently with how I read it. So, wh, why is, why has it changed? There has been no change that I'm aware of in the language, there's been no change to the interlocal agreement, there's been no change to any of this, we just have a change of interpretation that I don't feel is justified, I haven't seen the change. If those documents changed, the Enabling Act, if the interlocal agreement said, got, were, were changed that said Sid has planning authority, Sid has any of this, then maybe there'd be something to talk about. But everything that I've seen shows that the Uniform Land Development Code, the land regulations, the charter, and the interlocal agreement says exactly that they don't have planning authority, which means they don't have plating authority. And that was my conclusion. Thank you.
Does anyone on the council have any questions?
I don't have any questions for him, but i, i, if someone from, um, Robert, you wanna do a presentation, are you here to answer questions? I do have a question, but.
I'm here to speak to the chair. Yeah. And I don't have a presentation.
Okay, don't worry.
You all have seen, uh, since you guys read it the other day with a little bit of a history lesson, I thought it was important to do, because a couple of you are new, and don't really have background in it.
I'm sorry, may I just interrupt? Can you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, Bob Dipnderfer, Orson.
Thank you.
District.
Thank you.
Yeah. To reset you all, the briefing material that was done for a joint workshop that was held in December of twenty-eight. Um, you know, and really, we could've saved a huge amount of time, we could've saved months, because he spent an hour on an argument that we've never made. Sid has never said that it has plating power. Sid has never said that it has land use power. He's pointed you to the documents where we say we don't. General law doesn't let a special district have it. We don't have it. Okay? But it's only by saying that we're arguing that we do, that you get to the result that he wants you to get to. Okay? I'm gonna walk through some of the same documents that he's talked about. But the problem is not that we insist we have plating authority. The problem is not that we insist we have land use authority. We perform a variety of functions and services. You all know this, it's reflected in the documents. I mean, Sid was here before Wesley, Wesley was created after Sid. Both of us can do a lot of the same things. These instruments were put together to make sure we're not both doing the same thing. Okay? And it's for purposes of efficiency. So let's get to the conclusion page of their presentation. The city is a specific delegated authority as it relates to land use, no kidding, of course it is. Sid has no authority in land planning and plating, of course not, we don't. That's not what this discussion is about. This discussion came about in connection with trying to develop a set of land development rights for the city, where Sid's role as the primary driver of the construction of the infrastructure in the city would be overseen, managed by Sid. The city has a need to approve a plat at some point in time. And it has a need, in connection with approving a plat, to understand that the infrastructure necessary for that plat is either built or secured in some way, shape, or form, bonded. Okay? That action of building it, that action of securing the performance of the contract for the construction of it is not a plating function. I wish we could find the place in the tape, because he said it. The city has not identified that chapter one seventy-seven requires a bond as part of the plat. I put it in quotes, he said, "It doesn't say it in one seventy-seven directly." All right? That's the argument we made months ago. We've been two months with no response. We get this presentation, we get the material Monday, we're here to respond to it. You know, we could've saved a lot of time, we haven't been arguing that we have plating power. All we're arguing about is who's doing what in terms of overseeing construction, managing construction, certifying completion of construction, and holding the developer to account to accomplish it. And one way to hold them to account to accomplish it is to ask for a bond.
Excuse me, go back, what exactly, repeat what exactly the issue is, please. Just, just repeat what you just said, I was writing something, and I wanna, I wanna hear what exactly, cause it, it threw me off, when, this is throwing me completely off, what you're, all, everything that you're saying. Repeat what you, the last couple of questions, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
He's talking to COVID brain too.
I know, mine is too, and if things get on our nerves, I'm gonna forget.
We're not, we haven't argued that we have plating power.
Okay.
We haven't argued that we have land use power. That's reflected in all the instruments. I mean, it's not even waste time on that. What we're talking about are the things that we both can do. You guys can build, we can build. We build all kinds of things, roads, waters, sewer, drainage, all of that stuff. When the city was put together, it was put together to recognize that since we both can do those things, we probably ought not both to be doing them. Right? So, the charter reads the way it reads, and I'll come back to that in a second. The interlocal reads the way it reads, recognizing that relationship. All right? So when we sat down working on what your land development regulations ought to look like, in terms of how do you get to the point of certainty that you need to know that a plat can be recorded, somebody's gotta be able to check a box that says, yes, the improvements are built, check, or no, they're not built, but they're bonded. Okay? Who, under these instruments, has the power to build all these physical infrastructure things? Sid. So, notwithstanding the fact that a bunch of plats have come through in the city without having a bond listing Sid, the fact is Sid's got that responsibility. The fact is that those things which are being built, the roads, the water, the sewer, are being turned over to Sid.
And then, I think for just second, parts of roads, this is my understanding, that developer is responsible for building the roads. And for issue a bond, in case that they're, they're not doing it then, so.
Correct.
Where does Sid commit it? It is solely the, the developer.
No, they, they are turned over to Sid. They are turned over to Sid.
Once they, once they build, but not whatever it is.
It could be either way. It could be either way, under the interlocal agreement, let's go find it, it's on that page right now, to a section of it, that Mr. Jerome talked about, section six. He was all about reading the section that says, "Nothing shall be construed to restrict Westlake's home rule powers." That's fine, but that's just part of section six. Read the rest of it. "Nothing in this agreement shall be construed to limit Sid's lawful exercise of any powers pursuant to the Enabling Act or other applicable law, dah, 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 including but not limited to Sid's ability to enter into agreements with any person, firm, or whatever. Nothing in this agreement prohibits or prevents Sid from agreeing to allow a developer or contractor to construct or install water, wastewater, reclaimed water, irrigation, roadway, drainage, transportation, park, or other facilities or infrastructure, and transfer such infrastructure or facilities to Sid's ownership and control." At the end of the day, Sid is the infrastructure owner in the city of Wesley. At the end of the day, it's all gonna be turned over to the city, you know, after, after a period of time. But in terms of getting it done, it's Sid's function to do it. So back to the discussion for a minute. Hannah said, "The city needs to have some assurance that these things are getting done before it can report a plat." And we respond, "Of course you do." And we respond, "And we'll do it." That's what we're here for. That's what the interlocal agreement says, that's what the charter says. Now let's look at the charter for a second. Section four of the charter, we spent a bunch of time talking about section four, mainly saying, "The powers will be liberally construed in favor of the city." But read the first part of it. "The city has all the powers of municipality under the constitution and laws of the state, as fully and completely as though such powers were specifically enumerated in this charter." So basically, this charter pulls down the constitutional home rule power of the state of Florida. But then it goes on and says, "Unless, unless otherwise prohibited by or contrary to the provisions of this charter." So, it says, "You have all of the home rule powers that the constitution gives you unless the charter says you don't." And the charter says you don't. Let's go back to the section that deals with that for a second. Back in thirteen, thirteen F, non-duplication of services, it says, "The city shall not exercise any function or provide any service being performed by or provided by Seminole Improvement District at any time prior to transition." And this is where the history lesson is important. We have a development order, I say we, Minto has a development order right now from Palm Beach County. Before there was a Westlake, this was Palm Beach County. Minto sought, Minto received a comp plan amendment and a zoning approval for this development which they call Westlake. Forty-five hundred and forty-six units, hundreds of thousands, millions of square feet of other uses, whatever, got a D O from the county. The entity that was going to be responsible for the construction and management of all of the infrastructure to support that county-approved development was Seminole Department. Sid had all the powers. In the Act two thousand dash four thirty-one, which is our Enabling Act, it gave us that full suite of powers, and the plan had been for Sid to be that infrastructure development entity to support Wesley, the development. Things got airshaped with the county. Sid entertained a conversion plan, took advantage of the fact that state law allowed for conversion of a multi-function special district like Sid to become a city. A referendum was held, a city was created, this charter was approved. And at the time, going through and looking at how this could be done without stepping all over each other, and being informed in part, and some of y'all may know, the example down the road from Loxahatchie Groves, where when they incorporated, they really failed to deal with the power issue between the new town of Loxahatchie Groves and the pre-existing Loxahatchie Groves Water Control District. And as a result, not very long after they incorporated, they both wanted to do different things on the same road, pigfight, waste of everybody's time and money, you got two governments trying to exercise the same function inconsistently to the detriment of everybody involved. So the architecture of this charter was intended to avoid that problem. And it was solved this way. The city, you guys, you have the land use authority, you have the plating authority, you have a comp plan now, which by the way, recognizes Sid's authority and recognizes the local. Okay? And Sid is gonna do the things, the physical development part of it, which is necessary to support what is Minto's pre-existing vested development right. I mean, you got a city which already had a land use plan, basically, it had a development order from the county. You guys have to respect that, those rights are vested, you get to write your plan, you get to deal with future changes and all that other stuff, but the fact of the matter is you weren't just looking at a green field with no plant attached to it already, because Minto has that. So all we have been talking about, and this really shouldn't be so hard, is, who gets to build this stuff? Who gets to watch it? Who gets to supervise the construction of it? Who gets to certify completion of it? We'll agree on what the standards are, you know, but under the interlocal agreement, it's Sid's job to do. So you can't define the problem anyway by saying, "Well, Sid's now claiming it wants plating authority." We've never said it. Right? All we're trying to do is to get a single path through the development process without both the city and Sid having to involve itself in the planning and supervi- in the planning and supervision of construction, certification of construction. Your platting objective can be satisfied by SIDS saying, "Yes, it was built according to plan. Here's the engineer's certification." What got the city attorney wrapped around the axle is a bond listed SIDS. I haven't heard anything tonight, which tells me that the city is in any way harmed if that's the case, all right? So, forget the seventeen prior plats for a minute, although they all weren't that way. There was, at least Alex Way had already identified SIDS on the bond. What's the point of having this sharing of function or allocation of function if you don't live with it? So, two months ago, I sent a letter into the city sort of explaining how we viewed what was going on here, that we're really not trying to step on the city's platting function. All we're trying to do is not duplicate services. When you go back and you look at the interlocal agreement for a minute, you've got an agreement where the parties agree that the procedures and understanding in this agreement are intended to reduce the cost to the parties. Good idea. Avoid unnecessary duplication of facilities and services. A good idea. Provide for the efficient delivery of services and facilities. A good idea. Increase transparency, provide for accountability, and improve the quality of life for residents. The very next whereas says, and the charter says, "That Westlake shall not exercise any function or provide any service being performed by SIDS," all right? So, I mean, this agreement was done in twenty eighteen. We're sitting here in twenty twenty. The city was incorporated in twenty sixteen. It'd been four years, you know, going down this road. What's, I'm gonna ask the question, you know, what's changed? You know, this agreement was fine when it was written. And let's look at some more of it. It also says in paragraph eight, that the water control plan is controlled. That's the title of the section, "Water Control Plan Controlled." A little more of a history lesson. SIDS, as a special district, is required to have what is called a water control plan, but it actually does more than just water. It is its infrastructure plan, if you will. So, when the landowner got a development order from the county for forty-five hundred and forty-six units and all this other stuff, SIDS needed to have a water control plan that matched that. Because as a local government, a special district, SIDS can't build something which is not in its water control plan. So if it wants to implement the infrastructure necessary to support the Westlake development, it had to have a water control plan that showed all that stuff. And that was in the presentation that I sent you that was from the December twenty eighteen workshop. You've got some graphics in there which show you the layout of water, sewer, drainage, roads, all that stuff, which is all authorized in the water control plan. That document predates the incorporation of Westlake as well. So when Westlake incorporated, when it came to doing this, doing the charter the way it did, when it came to putting this interlocal agreement together, balancing the powers, it recognized that that water control plan and the physical infrastructure reflected in that water control plan was controlling. Now, if you guys at some point down the road entertain a comp plan change, change the uses and intensity of uses and all that stuff, SIDS is gonna have to come back and amend its water control plan to reflect what you do, all right? The existing water control plan reflects the pre-existing county approval. But it's controlling, per this agreement. And there's a section in here that deals with, and need referred to it, permitting and plan review, all right? The parties agree to the following process for the review and issuance of plats and development orders within the service area. Plats, okay. You've got parties, each of which has power to do certain services and functions. It's talking about plats. And it says, "SIDS has the exclusive authority to set requirements and standards for review, approve, and issue permits for the facilities depicted in the water control plan and then enumerated elsewhere in this agreement." All the hard physical infrastructure stuff. So the agreement doesn't, SIDS not trying to step on your platting power, you recognize that in the course of getting a plat approved, some of these physical infrastructure items gotta be done. And SIDS assigns doing. That's all we've been talking about. So, this really conceptually isn't that hard, okay? All we're asking for is respect the right and the balance of power in this document. Let's SIDS do the physical infrastructure stuff. That's what it does. And we'll leave the rest of the stuff for you. I don't understand, at one level, looking at the backup for today's meeting. And we will provide you, because today is just Wednesday and we just got it Monday, we'll provide you a side-by-side, point-by-point discussion of what's in that presentation. But the headline version is, you're talking about the wrong problem. You're talking about a problem we've never, we've never identified. But the message is, if you take that presentation through to some logical conclusion, you could be led to believe that the city is saying that SIDS really doesn't have the power to do a bunch of those things. And if that's the message you're sending, I mean, we wanna hear it. We don't agree with it, but we wanna hear it. You know, and we have, in the interlocal agreement, we have a process. We created a process to deal with disputes. We created a process to deal with places where you thought we were doing something that we didn't have the power to do, or we thought you were doing something you didn't have the power to do. This isn't it, right here? I mean, we need to have this conversation, to your point there, you know, we, we really need to have more joint meetings. If, if there's evidence of anything coming out of this, it's that.
That's one of the things in the interlocal agreement that we haven't, we haven't done. We haven't kept up on that at all.
So, one, it does not hurt the city one whit to allow SIDS to be named on the bond. Nobody identified any harm that comes from that, all right? There is a general law statute, two fifty-five point oh five, that says, "Any public entity that contracts for more than a certain dollar amount, it's a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars, must have a bond." So you can't say that SIDS can't ask for a bond. We have to have a bond. If we weren't sitting here tied up in this interlocal agreement, and we were just doing this under the county's jurisdiction when the county wasn't involved, you know, we'd be bonding everything there was. There's no reason not to be doing it right now. It doesn't harm the city. What harm does it do the city if SIDS is able to compel completion of improvements in the case the developer doesn't do it? There's no harm for that.
Can you explain that again to the part where the developer has signed over their, what they have, has signed over their responsibility to SIDS to develop the infrastructure?
The developer is constructing and turning over to SIDS typically upon completion, the elements of the infrastructure. Yes.
After completion, until then, developer's responsible for that, is that correct?
Correct. And then naming, naming SIDS on the bond. So in case the developer does not successfully complete, fails to complete, SIDS can step in and compel it to happen. Think about this for a minute. If only the city is named on the bond, what happens if the developer goes away? Under this agreement, the city is not empowered to do that construction. That's the function for SIDS. I mean, there's really no harm to have SIDS named on this bond. Not.
So that's the reason the, if that thing were, is listed as a designated, for that very reason there? In case the developer.
Yes. I mean, that's the whole point of bonding. As a public entity, you wanna be able to assure your citizens. SIDS wants to be able to assure the people who pay its assessments that if somebody is saying they're going to do something, they're actually gonna do it. And the one way you do it is you get a bond, or you get cash security, and then the other ways. You know, there's nothing remarkable about that in any of the stuff. What we're talking about here is simply who gets named on that. And since SIDS is going to take title to those things, and the developer is building them to turn over to SIDS, it makes perfect sense to have SIDS named.
Having run all that, can you explain again why in the post?
The presentation that Mr. Jerome just walked through is primarily why. That gives a lot more detail. But when it comes to the bond rider itself, again, we've had discussions if the developer were to default, any developer on any of the development out here. That bond is in place for the city to call to make sure that infrastructure work gets completed. One of the bonds for one of the projects out here was over four million dollars. That money is an insurance policy, if you will, a guarantee for the city to make sure that water, that sewer, lines, the roads, whatever bonded, gets completed. The problem with the language in this rider, SIDS would have the right to call that. The bank is saying, "We're not giving you any more money than what's left on this bond. If we, SIDS and city, do not agree on what works get done, or how it gets done, or who's the contractor to do the work, that money is just gone." You don't need two people trying to monitor what happens to that insurance policy, how it gets dispersed, how it gets completed. Now, the conversation that we've had about SIDS and its authority and what they do and what they're doing under here, it's always been clear that the city is not trying to go out and get a utility plant. We're not trying to construct water and sewer lines. We're not trying to construct drainage and retention ponds and things of that nature out here in the city. SIDS sets guidelines and standards for how that gets done. We're not doing that work. We're not duplicating that. SIDS engineer gets to certify that this work is complete. That gets admitted to the city's engineer. She reviews that information, makes sure it's correct, and signs off on behalf of the city. So the city is not trying to do utility work, for lack of a better word, 'cause that's what SIDS is here. It would be your public works, utility, engineering department. They get to do those things. The issue is, if there's a default, what happens? Who controls? Who's here to make sure the residents are protected and that does not become an obligation of the residents? Again, the other argument has always been, SIDS has no role in this until those infrastructure improvements are turned over to them. So it's also a question of timing. Up until the time it's turned over to SIDS, they don't own it. It's not their responsibility if it's not done. This is a financial obligation of the developer to make sure it gets done, not SIDS. Just because they have the authority to do these type improvements, these improvements for which the bonds are being requested because of a plat or specific obligations of a developer, they are not SIDS obligations. That's where the disconnect and disagreement has come from. If you're premature, you don't belong in this box, this is land use and zoning, that you say you have no authority to be in, get out. When it's turned over, you assess it, you manage it, you maintain it, you do whatever you want after that point. But until then, it's the city's obligation to protect the residents, protect the taxpayers, so they don't get stuck with those millions of dollars in improvement obligations that belong to the developer.
I have to take issue with that. You know, what's going on is the things that are being built are the things that are identified in the water control plan. It is absolutely not accurate to say SIDS has no interest in that until it's turned over to it. That's the whole point with SIDS. That's the reason these districts exist and do these things. So, yeah, we've got a water control plan which identifies this specific infrastructure. Yes, the developer's doing it. SIDS has as much or more interest in seeing it successfully completed as does the city. At the end of the day, the same people pay our assessments as pay your taxes, okay? They don't wanna see both of us doing something and paying twice, you know, for the privilege of having us go review the same stuff. The bond, the plat that was rejected was rejected because it named SIDS on the bond, okay? We haven't heard an answer for that. We haven't.
Just, yeah, from my understanding, SIDS has some ideas to how they want water lines, roads, and so forth.
They're built to SIDS standards.
Okay. The developer is responsible to build those roads, build that kind of stuff. They are the ones issuing the bond. Westlake, in case something were to happen with Minto, would they call the bond and then ask city to complete, ask city to complete the road? Is that correct?
I don't know. We have not gotten that.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if, if, if the developer issues the bond, and Westlake can call the bond and get that city to complete the road, which can just, you know, carry on. Then why does SIDS need to be on the bond?
Because it's a SIDS function. The way the charter reads, the way the interlocal reads, that responsibility is vested in SIDS to do. That's not the city's. To get that done is a SIDS responsibility. You know, the city benefits at the end of the day from it. It's part of our water control plan.
From, if, if I may, how specifically is SIDS harmed if the city of Westlake gets listed on the, the rider of the bond?
Not, not. We're not talking about that.
No, that's exactly what we're talking about. That's the whole point of this, just the fact that the bond is, you know, that SIDS was listed on the bond. That's basically why, why we're all here.
Right. The city is not harmed by SIDS being listed on the bond. SIDS is not harmed, SIDS is not harmed by the city being listed on.
Specifically when it's happened seventeen times prior without SIDS being listed on the bond.
Right.
So, why, why does big exhaustion of energy?
We were sitting down where it started.
Sir, thank you.
Be patient. I like seeing the, the interaction.
It, it is unusual for me to be this patient, but I, I'm trying. I'm trying to evolve as a person. With, with the notion that we're talking about, I've, I've heard a couple of things, and this is just my opinion on, on what I'm doing. I'm not trying to, to be all at force. Now, we've talked about SIDS, SIDS' responsibility to build roads otherwise. Now, with regard to the interlocal, under section fourteen, we talked about it, it says, "SIDS shall have the ability within the service area." It's not a mandate. They have the ability, it's not the sole ability. And with regard to that, when you go into fourteen A, at the last of it, it also says, "Westlake may own roads within the service area, and SIDS may transfer ownership roads within the service area of Westlake." So what this says to me is, they have the ability, but it's somewhat permissive. Now, with regards to Mr. Difinderfer's intention, you haven't heard how there'd be harm if two parties are on the bond. Now, my view of this is that it is a developer requirement, as, as Councilperson Paul stated. When you're talking about the plat, it's the developer that's gonna deliver this. And, and the bonding and guarantees are a developer's way around the requirement of completion prior to SIDS, prior to recordation. So when you're looking at it, the one that's authorizing the plat is the city and no one else. They're essentially sticking their neck out and allowing development to occur in recordation of a plat prior to anybody else. That's their whole job. That's why they're the sole ones on the plat. So when you look at it from that standpoint, the city has to deliver the performance on this. Now, who actually constructs it is exactly the right, is the right question and the right point. And if you have two people on the bond, what happens if they don't agree? I mean, we have the interlocal agreement, we have all these things, and we're still sitting here in a room with two parties not agreeing. Now, now, take it further down the road. If that holds up money, or that releases money too soon, or that, or that winds up in a differently allocated, the city might say, "Well, not all of this is the component that are sequenced in the way SIDS wants. If we want this first, we want that first." Forget the standard. The standard ultimately has to be met. "But we want this done first, that's done second, this done, this done third." SIDS says, "No, we want three, then one, then two." Which gets done? How does it go? Who's in charge of that? That's, that's the fundamental. That's why, if you have one on the bond and it deals with platting and the recordation, the city can set the, the one, can set the order. The city can set the order and SIDS can go and build it and the city can pay them. But if you have both of them there, you're putting two chefs stirring one soup. It's, it's, it's as that simple. You know, we haven't heard it. You know, we haven't heard it. A lot of this could be what happens later on, on the road. There's, there's contracts. Everyone thinks that everything is written perfectly the first time until you're five years down the line and you have COVID show up, but no one, no one considered that. So the, the idea and the complications of this is, I, is, yeah, they can be listed, but you're complicating it. And if they are listed, are they properly listed? When the, when the platting, this goes back to platting requirements. The uniform, the POMC, Uniform Land Development Code, and your Uniform Land Development Code, if you eliminated the bond, the bond is a developer workaround. Sid couldn't say, couldn't even come close to saying, well, if there wasn't a guarantee escape valve, they couldn't say, we have input on the plat recordation. They couldn't say, we, we want the plat to be recorded prior to the completion of the infrastructure. They don't have that power. They said it. So now they're talking about, well, we created a workaround. Now suddenly their powers spring to life? No, the powers remain where they were. You have to complete the infrastructure to get your plat recorded. The downside, the bad end to that is on the city side, not on Sid, because, because if that gets stamped and anything goes forward, it's the city's stamp, not Sid's stamp.
I have one question. Okay. Thank you both for your presentation. I received and read the letter from you, Mr. Difinderfer. So I think we can all agree that the creation of Westlake is just, is very unique. It's an untraditional, of course, government. In section and council, we can look at this and talk about it a little bit. In section 13, and it's, I know we have developers here, but in, in 10 is executive director for Sid. But in section 13, where it talks about the continuation and the dissolution of Sid, have we identified an exact date and year for Sid to come under the city?
Yes.
Okay, when is that?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. So with that, my, my next question, so, okay, thirty years. So that, that of course changes things a little bit, right?
Much earlier, most states, it could be earlier.
Right.
Both parties agree.
Okay. So with the thirty years. Currently, can, and you can answer this. Currently, with the current separation of powers between Sid and the city, can the city, is the city even able to engage in the land use planning without Sid's participation as it, as it relates to resources, utilities, and things of that nature?
That's a legal question, not a management question.
Okay.
Whether can or can't, it would be a legal question to answer.
Okay.
Repeat the question. I'm sorry, vice president.
Can the city engage in, in land use planning without Sid's participation as it relates to our natural resources and utilities and infrastructure initiatives?
No, we do not. We don't currently do that. One of the things that's required in all of these agreements and conversations to get to this point is the city has to get a letter from Sid to say, yes, we're going to have sufficient capacity to serve this development. We got a letter for hammocks, roads, meadows. We asked for those letters from Sid. That's provided to the city engineer to make sure we don't issue development approvals and Sid can't complete the infrastructure to make sure it's available. So they do the planning for that utility side. Normally you have a utility department doing all of that work. So it's contemplated, we work together, that we talk together, that we don't get ahead of them in their planning, as Mr. Difinderfer was talking about, the water control plan. That was just re-adopted by the council as well. So there should be this continual communication to make sure those services are in place. So they are at the table. There are back and forth communications between engineers as this is going forward. It is not being done in a vacuum. So, no, we don't do that without communication with Sid.
You have a floor back.
I think I've had my say on that.
I have a question. Was there any specific reason why Sid wanted to be listed and be on this particular plat, or bond, I should say, for this plat?
It should be listed throughout.
Okay.
You know, and the, the fact that it wasn't when this got started up and got rolling is an oversight and a mistake, frankly, given that that is a Sid function.
I, I don't think we have an agreement on that. Right?
I don't think we do.
Well, other than to say it is Sid's responsibility to build the roads or build infrastructure, it's not clear to me if the developer has to issue a bond and they're doing that, why does Sid need to be named on the bond? It's just, I understand your role as a developer. That much is clear, but I, you have yet to make a point as to why it is necessary for you to be on the bond.
Sid is going to own it. Sid is responsible for maintaining it.
Want to be built. That's correct.
Yeah, so Sid needs to be able to assure that what is permitted, what is planned, conforms to Sid's specs, is built the way Sid needs it built and is completed and turned over to Sid. I mean, it's, it's a real party of interest for that infrastructure.
So far, the things that, that clearly towards, towards the building process, Sid will, will monitor and, and have the input and say whether things are constructed right or not. So that goes with our question. That still does not place you on the bond. It still does not, I, I just don't see what, what they.
Let me come at it from a different angle. Chapter 177, the platting statute, contains no affirmative requirement in it for bond. He said it. It doesn't, I wrote it down.
Yeah, 177, the section, in the monument section, in the monument section, it talks about, and let's go, let's go to it, because.
The sense where, where you have the power to do that and certain things have to happen before you set your bond. Okay, so what?
So, so what?
That's not a plat requirement.
Excuse me. So what? With regard to that, if it says so what, it talks about bonding. It talks about where, where the, in 177, and I'll go to the exact statute on it.
I guess my.
177, oh ninety-one-nine. In those counties and municipalities that require subdivision improvements and have the means of ensuring the construction of those improvements, such as bonding requirements. So it's not that 177 doesn't, doesn't talk about it, doesn't have it. It's not within the 177 oh thirty-one. It's in the 177 oh ninety-one-nine, talking about monuments. But what it says implicitly and, or explicitly, excuse me, is that in those counties and municipalities that require subdivision improvements and have the means of ensuring the construction of those improvements, such as bonding requirements, your Uniform Land Development Code gives you the bonding requirement. So I'm not, I, I don't agree with his interpretation. I'm sorry.
That's against the question. It's not a question whether we do or not have a bond. That is our question. There will be a bond. It's in Westlake's name. So why do you need to be listed on it? How happens?
Because we're going to own it.
You will own it once it develops. That's what the bond is for.
And you won't.
You want to own it if it's not constructed.
Right.
So that's where, that's where I'm, I'm not, I'm not clear on it. And I'm not expert in this matter, so I'm asking for you to.
It would typically provide the bond to the owner. I mean, in this case, you've got the city sitting there as well. But at the end of the day, this is entitled infrastructure. We have this much interest or more in seeing it there with the city.
I can absolutely respect and understand your position where prior to Westlake's conception, this would have been all 100% Sid. Fact of, fact of the matter is, Westlake does exist now. It wasn't sent. And, I mean, everything that I have written down here, point after point after point, leads to the fact that we should in fact be the ones listed on this bond. I have a ton of remarks, and I'll make them later, but I, and then by your own admission, there is no harm to Sid if we are listed on the bond. And we weren't list, I mean, and you weren't listed 17 times prior. I just, I just wish we were exhausted as much energy and something that to me is, is a simple.
The fact of the matter is also, at the end of the day, given the way that the city and Sid have already apportioned responsibilities, it's not the city's to build. It's Sid's to build.
We don't want to build it. We want to ensure that it's built.
Exactly. And you do that by having Sid get it done. So if the city can't build it, why get the money? I mean, who are the owners? The owner typically gets the bond. Now, you've got a regulatory interest in seeing that those things proceeding, the infrastructure construction get done before you record the plat. I got that. That's not what we're talking about, though. We're talking about, you know, the fact that Sid is responsible for this stuff. It's going to wind up owning it. At the end of the day, it should have the bond. I mean, we can keep saying this is light, but.
Well, then we, we are, we are keeping the same, same thing. The thing is, surely there are rules and laws and whatnot. They say everything to the fact that, that Westlake is to be named. Well, it's, it's on bond, not Sid. I think what we should talk about, if there is room for that, how can we rewrite what we have to bring Sid into play? That, that would be a different approach. If we change everything we have and say, well, Sid is responsible and then Westlake is out of the way, then that's another thing. But at this point, Westlake is, what is it, in charge of this there? From what I understand.
Yeah, we may differ about what that document means. I mean, if you want to change interlocal, if that's what you're saying, that's a very interesting.
Westlake, that was advocate for one moment and just answered a couple of questions for me. Let's say we're not on the bond, and Sid's on the bond. What's worst case scenario for the city?
Worst case scenario, if you're not on the bond, you have no ability to ensure, you have no ability to ensure performance. You can't get to say who does it. You can't get to say who the sequence is. You can't get to do anything. Once that plat is recorded, your, your only means of security is that bond. If you're not on it, you're unsecured. You're hoping, for lack of a better term, you're hoping that the developer completes and all this is moot. And if not, you hope that Sid sees things the same way you are because you don't have any authority to, to direct what gets done when.
You see it that way? That's the reason Sid and the city have entered into this agreement. Sid is performing that function. I mean, you're talking about Sid as though Sid's an average party. It's not. It's not. You know, it is, it's a functional equivalent of your own public works department, basically.
We didn't know COVID was coming either.
I wouldn't say there's no otherness there. You know, the fact is you're secure through Sid's insistence on performance. We agree on what the standards ought to be in advance, you know, so that we don't have a set of Sid's standards and a set of city's standards. We know what's going to be built. The plans are approved, and that's, that is your assurance. Your assurance is you've got a sister government doing it.
I mean, you, you can understand the, the city's desire to have the interests protected, right?
And it is protected through Sid performing that function as per this agreement.
So I don't know if this was wrong or wrong, but with what you just said in the mind, Sid is more or less the, what is called subservient, whatever, works more or less.
That's not a word I would use.
No, no. Not what he said, but that. I forgot what the word was. More or less, more or less, Sid is bottom front time going to be on the Westlake. So, yes, you're responsible. The way I look at it, you're just a, a, a technical engineering department of City of Wesley, but just a department of Westlake. So City of Wesley is on the top side. Again, the point, I understand what, 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 what you're doing, what you're doing. I'm just not seeing where that places you on the bond. What? How, how is it, how is it that, explain to me this way. How can you ensure any more than the City of Wesley that some, should something happen with, with the developer, that roads and, or still, or projects going to get completed?
Other than the fact that we are responsible for it, that we have to maintain it, that we're going to own it, and that we've agreed that it's our job, I don't know. And that's, that's how we have split up the service and function pursuant to the interlocal agreement. Sid is, until the transition date, an independent special district. You know, we helped get legislation passed a number of years ago that would allow these districts to convert. And that's why Westlake exists, because that, that. But the transition exists, we function, as a functional matter, we're doing all the infrastructure for what is the City of Wesley and what's the approved development plan for the City of Wesley. And we will do that until we no longer exist. But that doesn't mean in that sense that we are an inferior local government, a subservient local government. We work together. We have a water control plan which matches the development order. We're all on the same page with what's going to get, come up out of the ground out here. We're all about making it happen, getting it to happen as efficiently as possible. And that's how we see Sid's role.
I mean, when, when it comes to the matter of the bond specifically, I think that it's obvious what my opinion is. Just in general, general terms, guys, we got to do better. We have to be better. We have to love Sid, and Sid has to love us back. We've got this symbiotic relationship that none of us can flourish and prosper without the other. And ultimately, it's cutting John. These, these disagreements are absolutely toxic. I hate the fact that we have to have a meeting like this and waste so much time in order to move forward. But, I mean, just, just in general, like, we have to do better. We have to be better. We have to work better. We have to communicate better. And, and just, you know, for the success and prosperity of the city, which is, you know, why I'm here. We have to work better together, you know?
All the, the.
Hi, for the record, Tara Dewey, Lewis Longman Walker, on behalf of myself, just to help the discussion. I hear the lawyers and then I hear you asking questions. And I know it's hard when you're actually in the throes of answering them, so I just wanted to re-ask the question on your behalf. I think it would help you to understand what the, the technical aspect of the bond once, I mean, once we don't build what we have to do, which we're not going to do. But you call the bond, so it gets built, not by us. We're out, if you call bond, that means we're, you know, we skip town. We're in South Africa. We're doing whatever. It's then on you guys to figure out how it gets built. And I feel like that question has been asked a lot and not really answered. So you may want them to give you more details because I'm not in this space. But I just felt like that question needs to be answered. Like, once, once we skip town and don't do our development and you call the bond, then what?
Like, like, I'll, I'll put you on the spot. Your legal opinion?
I.
Whose name should be on the bond?
Let me be really honest and clear with you.
Can I answer that? Let me, let me answer that.
Okay.
Let me answer that.
Sorry.
Can I ask you a question? Sure.
For the record, John Carter, Vice President of Minto. I, I want to thank everyone's patience on this matter. I know it's, it's testing me. I'm not going to, I'm not going to build, I'm not going to escape not building what I'm required to do, if I'm saying that right. Set that aside. We're all here painting a worst case scenario. We're all here painting a worst-case scenario. And I want to just rewind the conversation, because what's more of a real problem, and I'll use that word loosely, well, an issue that could happen, which is far more likely than me or another developer here not building something. The true issue at hand, and you, I think, vaguely heard it earlier in the conversation, and this has been my concern from day one, two people telling me to do the same thing. And so here's a perfect example. The city holds the bond in this scenario, let's play that out. And you heard Pam make the statement, which I agree with. If the city has to go through and have the city engineer exercise her professional opinion to forensically go back and study a construction project after it's built, could trigger a whole series of questions, inquiries, and items that need to go be dealt with. That's all theoretically, in my mind, before I get that bond back. Rewind a step back prior to that. I'm working with Sid, going through a punch list, turning over all of my engineering inspection reports, all the field testing, all the field observations, everything that I've been doing in concert with Sid, who's had boots on the ground. So the scenario that we're setting up here, which is really going to be the issue that happens, is that I crossed that hurdle with Sid, and they're ready to accept it. Sid delivers to the city their acceptance, but now the city engineer has to forensically go back and redo everything. So you're back to a couple of issues, two people doing the same thing. And you're back to me having to potentially have to serve two masters, right? I don't care, I'm not here espousing who should be on the bond or not. What I'm fundamentally worried about is how do we solve that process issue? Where I've got the city engineer and I've got the district engineer, both saying, "I've got to exercise my professional judgment and forensically go exhaustively look at the record of the construction before I can render an opinion to release the bond." That's the elephant in the room that's got to get addressed. And if that means Sid's the only name on the bond, or the Sid and the city are the names on the bond, or just the city, but there's a clear, by code or by whatever, articulation of who's on first base, who do I have to deal with if A happens, B happens? That's what I mean. That's ultimately what any developer who's going to come here and invest, I mean, you heard Pam say, these are millions of dollars of financial instruments. I could be putting myself and my corporation in an infinite doom whereby I may never see these financial instruments ever released. That's my worst-case scenario, right? So to me, it's less about the name on the bond as much as how do we provide the process clarity of who's doing what? That's my two cents, counsel, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may follow up in response to what Mr. Carter was saying. We just had requests for bond releases. Those releases have been processed. One of them was sent back, I believe it was on Monday. In the very beginning, when we start talking about this process with Sid and city, I raised the issue, can we have the city engineer in this loop, in this process, so that exactly what John is saying does not occur? I don't want to wait until we get 30 years and we're ready to accept and turn over all of this Sid stuff to the city when it's our responsibility and say, "Wait, our city engineer's never looked at any of this. I don't know if it's right now yet. She has to go back and do all of this work." We talked to the engineer. She can rely on the certifications from Sid with their engineer, as John said, the boots on the ground, with inspectors out there making sure this work is constructed properly. When they give her the certification, everything on this list of cost estimates for that $4 million has been constructed to our standards. We've inspected it, we know it's done right, we agree with it. She had to check with her corporate to make sure she can rely on that engineering certification so she's not going back and doing duplicate work, but yes, she gets all the backup documentation to say, "This was constructed properly." I get a letter from her, I get a letter from Sid's engineer that we've reviewed this, this has been done properly. Here's the work that's left, or please return our bond to us, all of this is complete. Everybody says, "Yes, everything's been done, the city's no longer at risk." Those documents go back. That is the process, there is a process in place. What I did not want is we got one pot of money to do these improvements. We're fighting over if the bond even gets called, if someone were to walk away. And how does it get finished? The city's not going to go out there and build that, because we don't have construction teams, nor Sid. We would both have to go out for bids to get that work done at the best price to make sure it gets installed so that the residents are protected. That is the process, there is a process. We're not going to go re-engineer Sid's design standards since they put in this tight pipe or these tight fittings and valves. That's not what the city does. We don't care about that. Sid, give us your specifications, that's what we'll go to a contractor to put this out to bid to get it done according to your plans. But you don't get to control making sure that happens. You don't get to take on the fundamental responsibility that becomes out of a taxpayer when the city has the right to have an insurance and a guarantee in place. That's the process. I've asked the question of Mr. Disinderfer, I've asked the question of John Carter. Have you ever provided a bond twice? And why would you? No, nobody's been able to say that a bond has been requested twice, both to the city and to Sid, so it's costing the developer extra money. That's unnecessary. I can't think of any reason that would be required. But I just want to make sure the residents are protected, and that's been the disconnect and the disagreement.
If we work closely together, which we should be doing, I'll be honest with you, the way I feel, and there's that, and Mr. Carter doesn't care where the bond goes. It doesn't matter to him, he'll be, says so. So if the bond is to the city, the city's back, several improvement districts is the back of the city, back of us, making sure that we got what we were supposed to get and it's finished, finished properly. And they're certifying it. I don't see the issue here, I don't. Bonds before, the 17 bonds that were before, you said it was a mistake, that it shouldn't happen that way, but I don't see the wrong in it, have you?
Well, I agree with Pam that there has been discussion of that. I'd like to see that articulated in code, or, I mean, it's all been just kind of a general discussion. Because there is still a deep-rooted fear, notwithstanding Pam being here or the current city engineer being here, someone else here to parachute in and say, "By God, for me to exercise my professional authority, I've got to do a forensic examination to go back over this," and then, boom, you know, everything that has been my biggest worry is gone, so...
It could happen both ways, though. It could happen to Sid.
But that's my whole point, is that it needs to be articulated somewhere in writing. That isn't there.
So why don't we do that? I mean, why can't we do that?
Oh, that's the first time I've heard that process issue articulated, that the city engineer will rely on Sid's certification, because that really was a sticking point in discussion.
We don't have an issue with that, do we?
No.
We don't have an issue with that.
But I think you're talking about amending the interlocal agreement.
Well, you know what?
What it's saying is, you know, Sid has exclusive authority to set requirements and standards for review, approve, and issue permits for all those facilities. Applicants applying for them apply directly to Sid. Sid provides notice from Wesley of each final permit issued by Sid, including amendments there to end of each and closeout of such permits. Our first closeout procedure is that inspection and release of bond. You know, I mean, so...
We can still do it, though.
What I'm hearing you say is something in the interlocal agreement needs to be changed. Because, you know...
Can I have both other councils' input on this?
I need direction from counsel on two things. My second question that I started on this was, we're in the process of writing Chapter 5. Chapter 5 laid some of this stuff out. It doesn't talk about the reliance on the engineer's certification. If that's the only issue from Sid, I can write that in there. That's not an issue.
Well, that's my issue. I cannot and will not speak for Sid. I'm just telling you that is my issue. So the elephant in the room. Okay. So is there anything we can do with that?
Well, I'm hearing that for the first time. That was a sticking point. If that were resolved, that's been our suggestion the whole time, rely on Sid to do it.
The certification is a different issue from the bond. This is at the end of the process. We would already have a bond in place with just the city's name on it. Can I get direction from the council on that so we can put this, be done with this conversation?
All you need to know is whether you, we accept putting this in the Chapter 5.
No. First question...
It's all part of the same conversation.
No, first question, they are, I will write the language, but the first question is, on these bonds that are being presented, should Sid be added as an additional obligation?
So you need a motion.
No, we can't do it here. This is a work... A direction.
I just need direction, I just need direction from the council. Does Sid get added as an additional obligation on these bonds? Mr. O'Connor?
I think that would complicate things. I think we should be the only ones on the bonds. But that being said, I would love to see something added in the number 5.
That's the next question.
Put their minds at ease.
You have to do it at the same time.
I'll do that, I'll, I'm getting there, John.
Within 30 seconds of each other.
Yes, sorry.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Should they be added as an additional obligation?
They should not be added. If we've been doing it with just the city, let's continue doing it with just the city.
They are many.
I think it should be just the city, and we work out a way to make the engineers, Sid, we accept his stamp of approval, and the bond becomes the city's bond. It is the city's bond to release.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Ms. Crump?
Yes.
Yes, it should be added?
No, they should not be added.
That's all I need, that's direction, that takes care of that. That gives clear direction to the city, it gives direction to Sid, it gives direction to the developer who's been on hold while we go through all of this process to bring this to you guys for a meeting to get direction. You know, COVID got in the way, or would have happened faster. The second...
I don't know, I push harder.
The second question is, when it comes to Chapter 5, do I have authorization to move forward so that Sid isn't in the land development places where they should not be? There are places where Sid is in there. I've talked about, we agree on a lot of those places. This would be one of them to write Sid in, where the engineer's certification would be acceptable at the end of this bond process to turn over, fine. But there are other areas we weren't in agreement, where Sid wanted to be in most sections, have an authority over what happens in the city permitting approval process. I would like to draft that, consistent with what we've been talking about tonight, and bring that forward. Again, until we get Chapter 5 and Chapter 7, the development agreement that's urgent for everyone can't move forward. That development agreement locks in our existing codes on the date it's approved. And I don't want to keep going round and round with this language just between Bob and I. We've got to move this forward to get the other parts and keep them moving.
I agree.
If I could just ask for a point of clarification again, Tara Dewey, Lewis Lomond Walker, on behalf of Vinto, PBLH, LLC. We, again, similar to the decision we've taken with regard to this, our only continued request is that while we don't expect the city to include Sid where it doesn't have authority, similarly, if we get right off on an issue that falls within Sid's jurisdiction, we don't want to then have to come and debate it at the city level if we already have that under Sid. So I think the direction from our perspective needs to go both ways in that regard, pursuant to the charter and everything else, if that makes sense. Thank you.
And if I may, just, again, my worry is, is the district attorney signs off on it with no further ifs, ands, or buts, that is the city's trigger to release the financial insurance.
City engineer.
City engineer.
Well, whoever, the city engineer, whoever ultimately makes that decision, but it's all predicated on the Sid acceptance and sort of...
Let me put a comment on the record. I want to go back and clarify this with the city engineer. As we're talking worst-case scenarios here, the worst-case scenario for the city side is what if it's on the road, and that road is falling apart, it's not up to standards or something? There's some obvious issue with what's there. If Sid says, "This is fine to me," and the city engineer sees it, can that issue be raised? So I have no objection getting with Ms. Dewey, getting with Bob, and trying to craft some language that the city engineer has to have some authority if there's something obvious, blatantly wrong or incorrect, to make a comment on that. Normal course of business, yes, we're going to accept that certification. But if there's something blatantly wrong, I don't want to put the city in a position where, "Sorry, you guys can't say anything about that." That's the only caveat. I'm open to language on that, but that's my concern without discussing it further with the city engineer.
May I just suggest, and just thinking profit-wise here, that's the kind of, that open-ended kind of thing. Well, again, we know who we're dealing with right now, we have trust in our team that we are working with, but we're all going to maybe retire someday. I think that you, as the city, and Sid, and your interlocal have a dispute resolution process and a way to deal with it amongst yourselves as opposed to holding up the developer whose issue it isn't. So I would prefer, your code assumes that you're going to both behave as you're necessary, and if, because they're a public entity, answerable to their taxpayers as well. So if that breaks down to the extent where they just stop building things that are safe to your city engineer's liking, I think you probably take up that process in the interlocal and maybe take it to court. But that isn't our issue as a developer, and we don't really want to be held hostage by it, is our concern.
Well, you got to draft code, and the code says you can rely on the certification.
Right.
Unless you can't. I mean, what do you mean? So you've got to write code. To the developer's point, the certification is exactly that, certification. Somebody's license is on the line. You know, if the city engineer, notwithstanding the certification, says, "No, I think something else needs to be done," then we need to talk about that.
And that has to be solved every day.
That's a separate drafting exercise. The city's had Article 5 language from us, and we've had this discussion from months ago. You know, I hear you, in general sense, yes. Sid doesn't need to be where Sid shouldn't be, the city doesn't need to be where the city shouldn't be. That's in the eye of the beholder so far. So you need to see the language. We're waiting on it, you know? Hopefully, we can get it back in front of you. But I think conceptually, we're closer now than we were.
We've gotten somewhere. That's why, that's why I'm so happy to have everybody here, even under the conditions that we're here under. So it's up to, I guess, when Pam and Bob work out how we can proceed from here on and free up the developer's hands at this point by getting their work done.
We swapped language. We, we swapped language. I thought we had gotten reasonably close other than this bonding and certification stuff. I'm waiting for edits.
I, I do have that. I will get those edits to them. But yes, part of it was this holdup. There were a few other areas I'll highlight, exchange that with Bob. There's two clarification questions from our engineer on some language revisions that were requested. So I'll go through that. The anticipation is it will be on the June, July, December, or first meeting. So that's the target date.
Okay. I got two thumbs up back there. Three. Okay, three. Okay. The, the, our B of our workshop. Do we have any city cops, council comments?
I think I said a lot, but.
Five, six years to go sitting off, Ken? For the time, for the time, for the time you did the design, by the time you started laying out everything, yes.
Seems like a lot. I'm only here until March of twenty-two. I think we, I'd like to speed it up a little bit.
I don't know. I don't know if we can really do that. I understand that, but you know, I think it's, I think it's, again, as I said before. When is the right time? I mean, Wellington was in facilities for fifteen years before it built its city.
Better than that.
Other cities, other cities that are new, they utilize what they have and what they can do and what they can afford. And again, ultimately, it's going to drop on all the taxpayers or it's not going to totally come out of the main developer's pocket. It's going to come out of everybody's pocket as to how fast you want to push this.
Well, let's see. We can convince Mr. Carter to lease us the space that we need, five hundred dollars a year for fifteen more years. I will pay. He's sweating back there. Come on, John, you can do it.
My only other comment would be just a simple observation and I think that we could probably do a much better job getting some of these issues resolved quicker, maybe more efficiently. You know, I've got this whole concept of, of government light, which is what we are, that's what it's supposed to mean, that we can get things done fast. And I don't mean the construction of SIDS all. I mean losing months and I understand we have coronavirus, but on issues like this. So just in the future, if there's a way, I'd like to see this cruise through these issues.
I'd like to, I'd like to compliment the governor after a number of years of experience. This is absolutely the first issue that has been a roadblock since day one that I'm aware of. Maybe some internal stuff that was happening there. But to the council, um, this, it's been really a breeze. The, the SIDS and their staff and our staff and, and Minto's, uh, development staff have been fantastic. Everybody has, it's run like a watch really. Um, at least from the outside when I'm like that. But I don't hear everything, I'm sure. But I try to keep up on what's going on and I think that'd be pretty well. And so to, to that, I think that, um, not that things couldn't get done a little more efficiently, but, um, and that's a reason why I said, even though we should be distancing ourselves and we should be not, probably not here, um, I had to think about getting people together in order to get things accomplished. And I, I figured that this was the only way that we were going to get where we needed to go is to be sitting in the same room looking in each other's eyes, even though we can't see your mouths, but we sure see your eyes. That tells a lot. So, uh, thank you, but you've done, you've done good.
All right. This is my welcome by. Smooth sailing from here on out.
Uh, I, I think I've said it a lot lately. Um, we need to, of course, communicate. Um, our communication in regards to staff, uh, needs to be increased. So I would like to see probably more staff meetings implemented with each individual of course council. Um, I hate coming in and hearing about things like this. It, it, it's too much sometimes. Um, and so I would like for there to be more, um, communication and transparency. And I know that we can, I call staff meetings every other week. However, I think staff also needs to make sure that they are calling them the council so that we are fully equipped and informed and, and we're able to, um, translate even to constituents. Because we kept hearing our attorney say, we are trying to make sure we are protecting the residents of Westlake in the long run. And so we do, as the attorney says, we work for, if you understand, of course, like you said, local government, we work for residents, right? Um, and so I, I think we, we just, we need to do a better job with, uh, communication and, and where we go from. That's your call.
The only thing I would ask, I don't know if it's possible to have another workshop back there again, but there's some other issues such as the park and, uh, easements, open spaces, they've been transitioned, transitioned, whatnot. That I think we really need to talk, to talk about. And when it comes to transparency, there's a lot that we don't know, especially in regards to parks, especially, you know, giving to the soccer company, whatever they are. And then there's a lot of things we don't know. And, uh, I think we really need to dig much deeper into all that. We also need to talk about, uh, Ken's position, SIDS did on one end, city manager on the other end. And how are we going to continue forward from that? I'm not at any one point, at any point implying that Ken does anything wrong, one or the other end. But from the outside looking in, it just never does look good if one, one man hip holds two heads. So I would very much love to talk about that some more, more forward.
And I can figure with the council, I mean, I should be receiving, you know, not only the city's opinion, but also the, you know, in a SIDS side, both sides. So I'm able to outweigh everything. So I'm mainly just hearing one side in the beginning, you know. So I think these workshops are very important and we should have them more often.
Why did you mention that? Um, as we started out here at great, getting this meeting, uh, uh, we're talking about, we're talking about those, we're getting this presentation, uh, is that, um, we, uh, charter, in our kind of, in our local agreement, I should say, um, have committed to at least two meetings, at least two meetings a year. And, um, and I don't, I know that we haven't done that and I, I think that we need to make sure that that is done. Um, there, I know there's instances that we've had with development and there's been instances with the park that came, has, was dedicated to SIDS that we were in the bar about. And, um, those kind of things shouldn't be happening, not between the SIDS. If we're, if we're this, we should know about everything that's going on in the background. I don't want to find myself in the position that we were in before this park situation where we didn't know, the city didn't know what was going on. That, that, that can't happen again, anything like that. Uh, it's, it shows, to me, it shows disrespect. Shows disrespect to this, to the city and to the people sitting up on this dais for, for that role. And, um, I, I don't expect, and the rest of the time I have left, on top of the city hall, I want to see exactly what everybody here is talking about, better communication. So, Mr. Castle, it's your responsibility, Sarah, to make sure that we have these meetings and that, that we have material to talk about. I think we can put together enough material to talk about on, on the city side and I'm sure that SIDS has plenty of material to come back. So, and if we need to have a special meeting for something, I, I have no problem with that at any time. I mean, if we, if somebody throws up their hand and says, in twenty days, we need to have a meeting, uh, let's do it. Let's just do it. And so that is important to me. And I know it's to the rest of the people sitting on the dais. So, um, that's my final comment. Um, and that's, there's any more from the city manager or the city attorney?
I have no comments at this time.
I just want to say thank you guys all very much for going through this now twice. Um, it was much appreciated. Thank you for reading the material and trying to understand all of the material. It's a lot. You know, we're lawyers here on this side. We understand this. We've done it for a while. Um, you guys don't, so it's a lot to take in. I'll try to communicate, explain bits and pieces, but I don't want to throw it all at you guys at one time. So we'll continue to have those individual conversations to make sure you're digesting what's being presented before you. Just thank you.
I'm, I'm on the big floor here. As I conveyed to Pam and to Ken very many times, this is not my wheelhouse. I, I, I think things logically, but I keep, I keep saying the same thing. If you ask me how to do a printing job, let me tell you, I can get you from beginning to end in a second. The issues that we're talking about, I get, but it's like, it has to be pounded in for a while and then I'll get it. And, and I, I don't think I'm unique in that, in that way because most of us haven't been trained as attorneys or land use, land development attorneys and all, all this. So for us to get together, and that's why I wanted us to get together, is to, you have questions that you asked that sparked me to come out with a, to understand something that I didn't understand before, or a direction that we may go in that will resolve an issue. Uh, and, and I really appreciate us getting together to do this. And it's, it's not, it's not that I wanted to do it. I should say, I, I do want to do it. I want to do it because I want to get to the bottom. That's it. I, I, I have very little patience for fooling around. That's why I have a business for myself and I make my own decisions. But when it's somebody else's, I, I don't have patience for that either. I want it to get done. And that one, and we don't hold up development and we make, and the city will grow at the, at the speed it's been growing. So. I'm off the soapbox. Um, we have any public comments? Zoe, does, uh?
I, I do not have any previous comment cards. We'll give a moment. Is there anyone on the line that wishes to make a comment? They may unmute themselves. Actually, I have a comment here. Please state your name. E. McCullen.
This is Audrey Wolf. I'm Director of Facilities Development and Operations. Thank you very much. We listened to the discussion regarding the early planning for the city hall site and we'd like to be very involved if it is the city's intent for the county to co-locate on the same parcel of land so that we can confirm the compatibility of proposed uses, identify opportunities for co-location of uses within the same structure, plan for shared accessies, and ultimately enter into an interlocal agreement with the city regarding the joint development of the parcel. Also for joint planning effort and the evaluation of the PC2 as a viable alternative for a civic site, we'd like, uh, we would need to confirm that the city is not going to oppose our efforts to locate the fueling station on the remaining portion of the fire station parcel. Otherwise, that fueling station is another use that would have to be placed on parcel PC2. We again see communication as being key and welcome all communication from the city as well as Minto. And before we can dedicate, um, our resources to that planning effort, we need to evaluate whether PC2 is going to be a good alternative to the civic site currently committed. We have no information about the proposed land dedication of PC2 other than its location and size and we have many questions. In response to our request, we received a copy of Minto's proposed developer agreement from the city clerk and we have a call set for Minto on Friday afternoon. Hopefully that call will start to answer many questions we have about the proposed terms of the dedication so we can start that evaluation. We understand your desire to move forward very quickly and we are not trying to hold the city up at all. Uh, but we want to make sure that this alternate dedication and the city's efforts do not preclude the county co-location if that's the direction of city council. Thank you for your time tonight. Good night and stay safe.
You too, then. Do you have any other comment cards? City clerk, any other comments?
Are there any additional comments from those on the line? We'll give you a moment to raise your hand or unmute yourselves. I see no further comments.
Mr. Carter.
For the record, this is John Carter, Vice President with Minto Communities. Want to thank the council, especially our two newcomers, um, for your leadership tonight. It's greatly appreciated. It's been a while and it's always dangerous to get me in front of a microphone, but I'll try to keep it to the three minute spare. I'll be, I'll be mindful, I promise. I, I really felt compelled to want to provide the council an update as I have often done to this council in terms of where we are and what's happening. Um, some I have spoke to about where we are and some I haven't. So here in the midst of COVID, I thought I'd take this opportunity to share it with everybody at once. I would say going back to Christmas of last year, we saw a noticeable increase in sales activity for residential homes. On top of that, obviously, there was a complete flurry of activity on the commercial land sale side with, uh, the, the UHS closing on their forty acre parcel, seven eleven, price ownership. I, I get to the end of the year, basically collapse. Um, but set, set that aside. So going through Christmas and into New Year's, on the residential home side, we just saw a noticeable uptick in sales pace and velocity. We got into January and February of this year and it continued to get stronger. In fact, we came out of January, February roughly a hundred and fifty percent ahead of business plan. I mean, it was unbelievable. Then we got to March, COVID settling, settling in. Early March, it, you know, we look back at February and we set a, a record for sales in February. March, first two weeks, we did great. The world shut down basically mid-March and we all held our breath. Um, and so the last two weeks of March, it never hit zero, but it went from, as I say, drinking from a, a fire hose to a garden hose. And we, we just, you know, buckle in for the long run and that's why we're here. We had into April and we set an all time sales record in April. And to buy a home today, you've really got to want to buy a home. You've got to wear PPE to come into our sales center. You have to set an appointment. You know, you're signing with sterilized pens and, you know, it, it, you've really got to want to buy a home. And, and, and it goes back to the fundamental premise that we launched Westlake, which is we're providing affordable homes at a price point that is just unheard of in this county. You know, over, I ran a statistic, over forty percent of our sales have been a base home price of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less. Forty percent. That's, that's well within the affordability range of, you know.
And we haven't even brought.
Three minutes.
So, so, thank you, Zoe. And so I'll conclude my comments to say.
I didn't have to call my names.
Call it your own way, Sarah. All of you are mine. You, 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 you hold me accountable and I'm ready for that. So I, I'll conclude my comments to say, we continue to see that even into this month. There is something special happening here in Westlake. Councilman O'Connor, you're, you're spot on. There is, there's this, um, something special happening here. I know I've talked about it with the city attorney. I've talked about it with the city attorney, my team. I want to thank you all for being a part of it and having that focus on the residents and on the community to do and come together with what's. to do and come together with what's right to serve that purpose. There's something special going on. Thank you.
Is that, who are comments? Okay. So, thank you, everyone. Oh, yeah, one more?
Oh, my iPad went on long time.
I want to thank.
We'll look into it.
Two new council members. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Hi, how are you doing? We're going to adjourn at seven thirty-two.
Well, it'll be an evening, Mr. Zoe, but.
Well, we did promise we were going to talk. We're always, we're always a good event. Mayor, I want to tell you about the city hall thing. So just to relate to you, when I went to law school in Colorado, we had the most dilapidated building ever, and they almost threatened to de-terrace because our building was.